All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Tuesday, May 10th, 2022 Board of Selectmen's meeting. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Dennis, if you can lead us in the pledge.
Oh, wow.
Over here.
Where are we?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, great. It's been a long time since like we've been five. I know, we haven't sat five across in a long time. I know, it's kind of nice. All right, do we have anyone here for citizen's petition? I mean, citizen's input? Not citizen's petition, we had enough.
Last night.
All right, anything come in on the box, Christina? No, sorry. All right, great. So we're going to start off with the reorganization of the Board of Selectmen. I know sometimes we've done this at the beginning of the meeting, sometimes at the end. I feel like it's good to just get it out of the way up front. The appointments will be effective tomorrow, so whoever gets put in new positions will finish out this meeting in the old position. And then after that, we'll move to some committees that have a Board of Selectmen member appointed to them, like the CIP Committee, the Economic Development Committee, the Audit Committee, and then the Poncet Reservoir Committee. So why don't we go ahead and start off with, we'll run in order as the motions are found in Board Doc. So why don't we start with Chair, then we'll move to Vice Chair, and then Clerk.
I'd like to put Leah's name up for Chair.
Second.
Any further discussion or? Okay.
I mean, so I think that if there's going to be any other nominations, then some discussion might be relevant. So maybe, and this is, anyone who's nominated might want to say what their thoughts are around, if they're, well, first of all, somebody who's nominated has got to be willing, and then, once they're willing, assume that they've thought about it and have some thoughts about why they want to do it.
Okay.
You know what I mean? I'm just throwing that out there.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea. You know, we are coming up on a really pivotal year, I think, with Bill retiring. So we have, for the last couple terms, done the Chair twice, two years in a row. I'm more than happy to keep it again this year if the Board wishes me to. So I would accept that nomination. So we had a motion, a second. All right, all those in favor? All right, so next, we will move to the Vice Chair. If we're going to, you know, kind of keep things going with the two terms, I'd move to nominate Stephanie as Vice Chair.
Second.
Anything else?
Thank you, I would be honored to stay on. And actually, you know, just to throw a little something in, I had mentioned this to Leah once before, that maybe if, if it is, you know, she's kind of told me it's a little bit of a learning curve to take on that position, that maybe we could start now and maybe in the future. Doesn't have to be like the Vice Chair has to be attached to her, but maybe we could maybe do some, get the learning going, maybe once in a while go with her when she's setting the agenda, maybe a couple of meetings and so. And I know that doesn't mean that I will be Chair behind that, but whoever is Vice, and it's also that if for some reason Leah isn't here, then the Vice is supposed to take over. And, I mean, fortunately, she really hasn't missed many meetings. But, yeah, so I mean, I just wanted to throw that in there, there might be something that we would consider in the future.
Yeah, go ahead.
I would just, I would add that that's almost what I would expect out of a Vice Chair position, is that they would be part of the process more so in that role, and that they would learn what it takes to have that leadership type of position. So that makes a lot of sense, Stephanie.
Absolutely, and if anyone else is, you know, if there's something else that any one of you would like to shadow that's going on, obviously, we have to be mindful of open meeting law, but I'm always more than open, you know, for anyone to join in, spread the work, you know, shadow. I really like what we did this year, where it wasn't just, you know, the Chair, that was CIP, like, I liked how we kind of spread that out, so.
You did a great job of delegating some other things, because it's a law for one person to take on everything.
Yes, it is, it is. So, all right, so we had a motion, we had a second, all those in favor, Stephanie for Vice Chair? Aye.
Aye, accept it with honor.
All right, great. All right, and then last, Clerk.
Move to appoint Dennis as Clerk.
My second.
You don't want to hold on to that, you're okay? Okay.
Can I through it?
Yeah. Well, given this a lot of thought, and a lot of people have told me I was going to be the Clerk.
It's really a great way to learn, I have to say.
It is, it is.
You've been voluntold, by the way.
Yeah. Especially if you've done AdCom Chair, I mean, Clerk or other ones, then you already know half of it, so.
Yeah, I've done it, yeah. But no, I'd be honored to be the Clerk.
All right, great. So, all those in favor? All right, and then we don't have to move on 2.2 tonight, but we certainly can if the Board feels that we're ready to. I just wanted to put this on the agenda, either to start thinking about, I know it's a lot, Dennis, with you just joining, there's the Capital Improvement Planning Committee, the Economic Development Committee, the Audit Committee, and then the Poncet Committee. So, you know, if anyone wants to stay in a role that they're in, I'm part of the EDC, I'm more than happy to keep it, or, you know, if someone else wants to, wants to take that one and get involved there, that's certainly an opportunity as well, so. Would you guys, go ahead.
I'd be interested in EDC.
Okay, all right, wonderful.
Not to take your job, but that's certainly an interest of mine.
And I will probably still stay very close to the Foxborough Common Business Collaborative, maybe you will too, given where you live, you know? It's a great group. I don't see, I don't see myself leaving those meetings, but do you want to go ahead and make these tonight, then, just tackle them?
Sure.
Okay, so we'll motion to appoint Seth to the Economic Development Committee.
Second.
All right, all those in favor? All right, let's go to Capital Improvement. Anyone interested in that one?
So, I mean, I'll do it, but if somebody else, I mean, I think it's very interesting how the process works. Were you about to raise your hand, Dennis?
Dennis is raising his hand behind you as well.
No, no, but you know what, Dennis, honestly, if, I would, I'm pretty honest, I would say, I would prefer to do it, but if, you know, I think it'd be great, and I think that also, other than Clerk, it kind of gives you a little more oomph in getting yourself, getting your feet wet, and also, I think your background is probably, you'd probably be a great person to take it, so I would gladly hand it over.
All right, so you're going to appoint him, and I'll second him?
Sure.
To appoint him and second him?
Sure, I'll move, oh, do, Clerk, do you want to make the motions?
No, I just wanted to point out that we usually have the CIP Committee appointments go up to the end of June, so if there's any action after town meeting, and then, so we appoint them all, so I could put that on the appointments for.
So do we want to make him appointed then as of 7/1?
Yes.
I think that makes sense. Okay, so to appoint Dennis as of July 1st.
Clerk, do you want to make the motions, because you were making the motions, that's fine.
Oh, no, not necessarily, but I will.
Yeah, go ahead.
You know, Dennis, as of 7/1/22, become the representative to CIP.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, so that leaves us with Audit and Poncet. Poncet, I feel like you've got some real good background on that one, I don't need to put you on the spot, but.
Been on it for a while, I probably dropped the ball during COVID for a couple of years, you know, being focused here, but I would have no problem being reappointed and starting to get back involved with them again.
Okay, yeah, and I know with the whole cleanup, that was pretty quiet, and Christina talked to them, and I think it, I'm not even sure if they're still around.
Yeah, I think that if we wanted to come back to it for the next meeting and have everything, we could have everything sorted out and have a chat with you afterwards, just to make sure we're talking about the same thing.
Okay, all right, sounds good. So, you know, I think we can point, Doc, pending Christina's investigation, and if the committee's defunct, then we'll hear about that when we do all of our appointments, so. Can we get a second on that one, and then it's just taken care, we don't have to come back to it if it's still around?
Second.
All right, so all those in favor?
Aye.
And then last is the Audit Committee. So Bill, have we, has the Audit Committee met this year?
No, I don't believe they have.
I don't think that they have either.
I don't believe they have, no, I'll check on that one, I'll check on it tomorrow.
And who was on Audit Committee? I think, was that?
I don't know.
So I believe it was Ed who was appointed to the Audit.
It was Ed, you're 100% right.
I believe that the Board of Selectmen, doesn't have to necessarily be a Board of Selectmen, it's just a Board of Selectmen appointment, so I think we had Ed and then possibly, I want to say Gary Whitehouse, but he might have also been at AdCom or the third appointment, or somebody else, so.
Okay, so why don't we come back to Audit Committee? I think that's one that the whole committee probably needs to be looked at, and we have to make sure that they do meet, I think they have to meet at least once a year, so. Bill, if you can take that one.
For some reason, was Larry Uwe on the Audit Committee?
He was a part of advisory.
Yeah, he was.
So, I mean.
No, we did appoint him after, he was off advisory too, yeah.
I was going to say, maybe he might, he might be willing to, just sort of throwing that out there, he might be willing to, I would, I mean, I would, if nobody else was going to do it, I mean, I would gladly do it, but I just feel like the word audit makes me think finance, and maybe somebody with a little more, you know, finance background might be, might be better. So maybe we could just check with Larry?
Or I could, yeah.
Yeah, all right.
Okay, all right, so we can come back to that one, once you investigate, and if you can keep us posted on the Poncet.
Well, you know, I was going to bring that up, I mean, I'd be certainly amenable to do Audit.
And CIP, they kind of.
Or have Stephanie do CIP, and I would do Audit.
Okay.
I mean, I've done Audit before.
Okay, well, why don't we, why don't we come back to that one?
Okay.
And, sounds good, I like how we've kind of spread things, spread things out, so congratulations to everyone on their new positions, and welcome to the Board, throwing you right at us, Clerk.
Congrats, yeah.
All right, so moving on to our next item, I see Christine is on. Christine, are you joining alone, or are we waiting for anyone else?
No, I am by myself.
Oh, hold on, we just can't hear Christine, Mr. Beck.
She's muted.
She was muted, and now she's not.
Say something.
Can you talk again, Christine?
Yes, hello.
Okay, there you are, all right, great. So this one is a little different, because the race route is still pending, so we're going to look at this tonight, and we're going to look at two different routes, and we're going to approve both routes, but Christine will let us know by June 8th which route they're going to take. So Christine, I'll let you give the background and the Mass DOT and all that info, if you don't mind.
Certainly, so we were looking at redoing the same route that we did last year, but with Schneider Electric, they're building in their parking lot that they let us use last year, we weren't able to do. So we decided that Amanda Chase, our owner, wanted to really have the program start right from our parking lot. So after talking with Sergeant Collins about the proposed route, who by the way is a really, she's just really incredible, she made the process last year and this year so seamless, even with the bumps that we are going through right now with getting the approval, Sergeant Collins was really terrific, and continues to be. So because of the route that we want to use, that comes out of CrossFit Tork, it goes through the Chase parking lot, and then down East Street, there's that spot right at Route 1, when people enter, come and offer Route 1 itself, they enter that, that same point that our runners would be going down the street.
And just to stop you for, for one second, when we say East Street, we have another East Street in Foxborough, so it becomes very confusing, it's really the end of Main Street over Route 1. It's East Street in Rentham, not East Street in Foxborough, just so, because that confused me the first.
Just got confused.
Yeah, thanks, sorry.
Okay, no, thank you, actually Katie explained that to me the other day, so sorry about that. So we went to the DOT and explained to them what we were looking for, and sometimes certainly went by because of just getting in touch with the right people over there, but now we're on course, and you have the form, your form from the DOT is simply stating that Foxborough and Rentham are aware that we are getting, that we are bringing you aware of our intent. You, you know, with that signature tonight from the, for the DOT form, what I need to do is then obtain those, and then bring them to the DOT, and then they said it's going to be that, that's where that June 8th date comes, that it will be 20 business days once they receive the awareness signature. So at this point, Rentham Police Department and Board has given the signatures, the Fire Chief not yet, and I think it's, that's an administrative thing, it's not a safety thing, from what I'm learning, but I can't quote that, so I need to follow up with that. And then, and then the backup, in case the DOT says no, we have been approved for a second route using Mechanic Street and a route that you have the map for, and then we will get, the superintendent has approved that, and that's the option two, in case the DOT says no, and they're concerned about safety, and that's perfectly fine. So we're just trying to cover all bases, make sure that we go through the process correctly, and have a backup plan in case the DOT says no, thank you.
All right, great, so, you know, basically, it goes through two towns, state road complicated, that's first choice, that's what we're approving tonight. If there's a hiccup and it doesn't go through, it's essentially what I would call our usual, you know, route, but instead of starting at the Schneider Building, it would start at the Ahern and run the same, you know, net, more or less route as usual. So it's a little bit different, that's why we're approving both, it will only be one of the two, and we'll know by June, so there'll be plenty of time to prep from, you know, a PR, getting the word out to folks, public safety and all that, so. Any questions from the Board?
No, well, yeah, sorry. So Rentham's signed off, I assume we're going to sign off tonight, and Police and Fire are signing off, have signed off already?
But then it's going to go to the Mass DOT, because it's state road, so.
Right, so you need all the signatures first.
Yep.
And then, okay, good enough.
And it's really, it's not much in Foxborough, it's like the start, and then they turn into Rentham, so. The majority of the course.
So, Doc, I actually have Police, Fire, and State Police sign off on the event notification form, and so it'll just be Leah's, you know, should you guys approve, I'll have Leah's stamp for the Board of Selectmen side, so then she'll be all set.
Okay.
But kind of neat, though, we're seeing how it works when it's on a state road, so thanks for being a guinea pig and kind of figuring it out, hopefully it works, but we're certainly more than able, I think, to have a backup, I think we understand the need to have a backup so you can move forward and plan the event and advertise it, so. Any further questions before we take a motion?
Chairman, I know that Lieutenant Fitzgerald is here from the Police Department, anything you want to add, Kenny, before?
No, I'm familiar with the route, the usual route, and I've seen briefly this route, and I know the DOT obviously is that.
I'm sorry, Lieutenant, we're getting, you got to come up front.
No problem.
Mr. Beck is very.
So the usual route, we all know the usual route, we do that one a lot, their alternate route, I saw the plans a few months ago when Sergeant Collins was looking at it, and obviously the only real issue there is that the right turnoff Route 1, which would be easy enough to close, as long as DOT rubber stamps it, but if they rubber stamp it, there's no reason we can't make that happen safely, easily.
All right, great.
Thanks, Kenny.
Yep, I think we're ready.
All right, just wanted to first say hello to Christine, our sons went to high school together, so, good to see you.
Good to see you, thank you.
Yeah, all right, down to business here. Motion to approve a use of public way application for the CrossFit Tork Second Annual Road Race on August 14th using one of two approved routes and to be determined, and to be determined by June 8th, pending the determination made by Mass DOT.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Good luck.
All right, good luck.
Thank you very much, and Ms. Lang, thank you again, you're always so terrific, thank you so much.
Oh, gosh, you're welcome.
All right, take care, thank you.
All right, so next up, we have Achilito's, and I know, I think I saw someone on the line.
Hi.
Hello, how are you?
Thank you, how are you?
Good, and just to remind the Board, we have seen one of these applications before, but if you can just go ahead and tell us your name and a little bit about what you're doing in your application.
So my name is Margaret Pimentel, I'm the owner of Achilito's Taqueria, and we are hoping to provide beer service for the Garthbrook concerts over on our premises, and what we do is we serve, we're a fast casual Mexican, so we serve burrito bowls, tacos, very, you know, they come in, they grab something to eat, they grab a beer, maybe two, and then they get on along their way.
All right, great, and you're aware the liquor has to come in the same day and out the same day, so in the 20th, and then it would have to come out on the 21st.
Yes.
And I have to say, everyone says the most lovely things about you anytime your restaurant comes up, so, seems like you're a great business owner in town.
Thank you, appreciate that.
We're here at least once a week, we love it there, we love it there.
All right, so, you know, we've seen this before, any other questions for this, for these two one-day licenses for this event?
Only, obviously, I feel like we would have heard something, so when we've given them in the past, no issues, right? We, no issues.
Yep, everyone was tip certified at that time, too.
Just remind me, it was, it was a football game, right? Is that, is that what we, okay, for the last time?
Yes, one of those events, I don't remember exactly, to be honest, but we have a real ID scanner, we scan their ID, everybody has to come up to the cashier when they want to make that purchase, we have ID bands also, so.
Perfect, you guys are, you guys are on top of all of it. The reason why I ask is, obviously, is a big difference if it's a smaller, concert is pretty much like a, like a football game, because.
Yeah, but that real ID machine, just to buy that for the one days is pretty impressive, so.
Yeah, I'm sure.
I think it shows her commitment to safety.
Absolutely, good for you.
If I remember correctly, too, you were the one last time that said you were the only one serving beer, was I correct the last time you did it?
Yes, yes, so we have two registers, and so I was on the register that was serving beer.
All right, yeah, sounds, sounds like she's got all of her, everything figured out and everything in order. Any other questions before we take a motion? No? Okay.
So I know I'm having trouble staying on task tonight, but your food is excellent, I love it. All right, motion to approve, motion to approve two one-day beer and wine licenses for Soul Taqueria, doing business as Achilito's Taqueria for May 20th and May 21st.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? All right, good luck, thank you.
Thank you, guys, have a great day.
Good luck.
Thanks.
All right, so do we have Paige on? I haven't seen Paige yet, but I know she should be dialing in.
Yep, she's on.
All right, and Lance as well, if we can bring up Lance?
There he is.
Hey Lance, all right, so we are all here in the room, and we'll bring, we'll bring, sorry, was it, I know it's Fitzgerald, but it's a lieutenant? Okay, Lieutenant Fitzgerald, back up, we do have your map in front of us, you can't see it here, but, and let us know, Mr. Beck, if we need to turn that at all, or if you've got it, but if you can, can walk us through this parking plan.
Sure, let me just make sure I can share my screen, yep, of course, Paul Beck is on the ball, even though he tricked me so badly the other day, but we'll talk about that another time. Let's see, he played a practical joke on me with Mr. Johns. Anyway, let's see, do you guys see my screen?
We do.
Okay, so, the reason we're here, so I have Lance and Lieutenant Fitzgerald, because the one-hour parking was removed a couple of years ago to reduce sign clutter, if you recall, the one-hour parking was not being enforced, and we had signs all over uptown, so as part of our wayfinding and our uptown revitalization effort, we did remove those signs, and said we would deal with them as needed. So now we think it's going to be needed, because the Maryland Rodman Performing Arts Center is now, you know, up fully running again, and Shovel Town Brew Pub is expected to open this summer, so with those two uses going, we know that corner is going to be challenged, and we acknowledge that, you know, that certain nights of the week, there is going to be a challenge up there, and we want to make sure that we're not, you know, waiting and being reactive and trying to be proactive to this. Also, we do have some residential units coming online, the 50 units at 29 Wall Street, that's right next to the post office, they're expected to come online in the fall of 2022, actually, some, the four units above the fire station are supposed to come onboard this summer, and then 15 units on the site of the Keating Funeral Home is next fall, fall of '23. So, you know, we acknowledge that all that activity uptown, we feel that's important because that's bringing people uptown, and it's going to, you know, we're going to start to see more businesses want to open up, because, you know, with, businesses like customers, and when we have customers built in, that's kind of how you make an uptown, you know, walkable and livable, is by just, you know, sort of creating people living up there, the sidewalks won't roll up at night. So we do have some uptown parking areas on the street, you know, I won't read them all, but you can see that the ones on the left are the on-street parking areas, and right now they have no signs, except a couple limited, you know, maybe 15-minute signs. Then we have some public lots, and that's the Central Street Lot behind the businesses, the Library Lot, which has 22 spaces, the Town Hall Lot, which has about 65, and then the Schneider Lot, which has 44. And here's a map, hopefully the folks at home can see this, that's why I gave you the bigger one, just so you'll be able to get it. So that kind of shows, there's orange, I don't know if you can see it, but there's orange in the street parking areas, and then yellow are the parking, the public lots that we have. So originally, I had grand plans, you know, planners always have grand plans, so I thought we were going to come up with this fabulous plan of, you know, hourly limits and overnight parking areas, and we unfortunately learned that it's a little more difficult than that, and that's why, for example, the one-hour parking signs weren't necessarily being enforced in the past. So I'm going to turn it over for a quick second to Lieutenant Fitzgerald, so he can kind of explain why we can't create, you know, sort of four-hour parking areas or various parking areas throughout town, why that's a challenge, so. Ken, do you want to go ahead and just sort of explain some of that?
Sure, thank you, I guess I'm the bearer of bad news. So, just by way of background, I started my career in Southborough years ago, small town, no parking issues, little downtown, I spent 14 years in Natick, where parking is, there's committees, there's groups, there's a, there's a parking department, there's a whole branch of government dealing with parking and placards and meters, and here we are in the middle, we're somewhere in the middle, we're not, we're not, we're kind of steaming in that direction slowly, but, so when Paige had asked us about time enforcement, the easy answer is, from a public safety slash law enforcement perspective, generally speaking, what our people out on the street deal with for parking, effectively, are two issues. The restrictions, the major restrictions such as handicap and fire lanes, that sort of thing, and then the issues of blocking, blocking a fire hydrant, blocking a street, blocking a crosswalk, blocking snow removal, those are the things that are easy enforceable by the police who are either called somewhere or drive by and see it. When you get into the parking restrictions, this zone is for this, commercial unloading only, you know, no parking Tuesdays, but when you get into those specific regulations, especially things like overnight and time limit, it gets challenging. Time limit, how do we know that this car was here, four hours and one minute, three hours and 59 minutes, you can't chalk tires anymore, you, we can't dedicate somebody to sit and watch a car for four hours for a $20 parking ticket, there's no ROI there, so that gets challenging. The longer the time limit, the more the challenge, obviously, and then overnight creates its own, own issue, that if we send our officers out and say, hey, you know, 1 a.m., go check and write parking, write parking tickets, what's to say when the person comes in and appeals the ticket, they say, I was at a friend's house, I went home at 1:30. So the time restrictions become very challenging, and I don't think we're there yet, I mean, hey, are we headed that way? Sure, could be five years out, could be 10 years out, but, so that's what, with Paige and I and Lance, we discussed that, when you start with the real different restrictions, and it gets challenging. So that's why we had suggested, there's some other ideas coming up here that might be a good step towards controlling parking a little more than we do now, but not going full-blown into urban downtown with an actual parking meters, parking enforcement people, that sort of big step.
And I think that's the challenge with all the sign clutter, you know, like we had before, if we have all these one-hour signs and then no one's enforcing it, you know, it is just a lot of clutter, so now, here we are, you know, somewhere in the middle, especially, I think, with the overnight parking and the long-term parking, I think now we're seeing some residents that are, you know, leaving cars, especially during the snowstorms that really became noticeable, you know, on the streets for long amounts of times.
So, so when we all sat down to discuss this, you know, after Ken crushed our dreams, my planning dreams, we started thinking about, okay, what can we do? And Lance, since I made you join us meeting, I don't know if you want to talk a little bit about it, so we came up with some, some suggestions on what to do next, and data collecting, because one of the points we contend is that there is ample parking uptown, is that there is ample parking uptown, and I know that folks don't necessarily like to walk, um, but, you know, we have the Schneider Lot, we have the Town Hall Lot, heck, we have the Central, Central Street Lot, um, and then even the Library. So we do have some parking uptown, it's just that it's not necessarily, you know, visible from a venue. Um, so with, with that discussion, Lance had some great ideas around dat- data collection. So I'll let, I'll let him sort of explain some of that and, and what we're hoping to get out of this.
Sure, sure thing. Thanks, Paige. Um, so yeah, so I think, you know, you know, one of the things we talked about is the perception, and, uh, we want to get away from that by just starting to collect some, uh, some real data on the issue, sort of establish a baseline during, um, you know, peak events. Um, we have, you know, two particular events right now that we're going to try to collect data for, um, over at the, um, I forget specifically, one's, Paige, what are the events, uh, planned, the comedy event there?
Yeah, it's going to be the Rodman Awards and then also a comedy show, so on May 14th and May 19th, yes.
Right, so I mean, we're, so those are the two events we're targeting to start with. Um, the Police Department has generously offered to use their drone to actually collect aerial images of the, of the lots, so we can actually have, you know, a record of, you know, what the parking looked like at an event like that, you know, around downtown at these lots. Um, and then, then we'll have a historic record, and we can kind of see, you know, like, get some of this documentation prior to, uh, Shovel Town and these other places opening, and then, you know, continue kind of observing the situation as times move forward. Um, the other issue was that, um, I don't know if you want me to talk about the takeout parking zone, uh, that we talked about? You know, just, you know, in lieu of the, uh, you know, time limits of an hour or less, they thought, the Police Department could thought that five minutes approximately may be, uh, a relatively, uh, you know, enforceable option for, you know, quick pickup areas around certain types of businesses that may or may not be interested in having that near their business. Um, however, if we're going to do that, um, we should discuss having a policy in place for the Board of Selectmen to consider those requests. Um, you know, so we don't want to obviously dedicate too many parking spots to just, you know, five-minute parking, um, you know, and takeaway, you know, you know, affect other businesses negatively from that. But, you know, there may actually be a, a place and a, a benefit of having some parking, um, you know, places designated for that kind of thing. Paige, you want to jump in?
Sure, sure. So that's sort of, wh- when we stepped back, I was like, okay, so what can we do? So to Lance's point, collecting data, getting an idea of what really goes on uptown. Um, because I'm, everybody's heard me say that, you know, the Rent Them Outlet Mall, you go to that outlet mall, you park thousands of feet away from your destination, and you don't think twice about it. You go to any mall, I mean, not that people go to malls much anymore, the traditional malls, but you go anywhere, you, you park pretty far away and you walk, and it, it almost doesn't faze you, but when you get uptown in any community, it, it just feels odd to not have parking right there. So we do believe that, you know, this, there's also going to be an, sort of an education effort. Um, we would also be working closely with the venues, um, to theater, the theater in Shovel Town, to make sure that they're completely making clear where the parking opportunities are. Um, perhaps we can even get them to include information with tickets and reservations. So these are some of the, the ideas we, we've had. And then I skipped over the other thing that I, I think is important is, obviously, um, Lee, I think you mentioned the snowstorms. We started talking about, you know, knowing that we're going to have more residences uptown, and knowing they might have visitors or, you know, more than one car. Where are we going to direct folks to park? You know, when we have a snow ban, or if we want folks to go, and, you know, we talked to, to Lance and Chris about whether, you know, maybe the Town Hall Lot we could be used, and they just had to be out by a certain hour in the morning, because we know Town Hall doesn't open till eight. You know, the schools are priority, um, and, you know, that sort of thing tends to go first, and then, you know, getting to Town Hall gives a little more time to do it. But we're, we're at the beginning of that, so, um, but these are sort of the ideas that, for phase one, we're calling this phase one, that we start talking about and looking at, um, for that. Before I go to the next slide, does anybody on the board want to say anything about this? Any questions or comments on that?
Just, um, just, obviously, the snow is going to be crazy, because even if you're a lot, telling people you can park in the Town Hall Lot or over at the Igo or something, um, even if there's no school, the administration of, unless it's a real bad storm, they go in. So just because there's no school.
I don't think we're telling anyone to park at the schools.
Well, well, no, but you, you see people park there.
Oh, really?
Like when I'm dropping Jimmy in the morning, sometimes you'll see some cars.
Oh, I know, we're getting in the front.
But I mean, even, you know, uptown or other places are saying you could park in Town Hall, just because, um, we've had snow, that doesn't mean Bill has called off work. I mean, I guess if it's a really bad storm, you, you would make that decision, but you, the, the DPW, the guys still need to get in plow. So, so, you know, they're having that, you know, okay, they're there till 8 o'clock, but when, when the snow is going to be a real struggle, if people hit some of these places and they're not out, when the guys are.
Well, usually, in a situation like that, we would, we would, uh, exercise the parking emergency and then notify people they couldn't park in those areas.
But are we, you know, my thought, looking at particularly Bird Street, is we have the snow emergency, we tell people they can't park on the road, they park on the road, cars are covered with mounds of snow, they sit there, like, can we do a better job? I know we can't enforce, like, everything, but to me, those big snow ones are probably ones that we can, you know, people know, oh, if I don't move my car, nothing happens. So what do you do? You don't move your car. So maybe, I think, with the snow stuff, we can probably maybe make a closer look at that and really start, you know, ticketing or even, hopefully not, but towing cars that, that don't, you know, kind of listen to the snow emergency. So hopefully, we can come up with a place for them to go, but then make sure we actually get those cars off the road, because, you know, it really ends up affecting, like, the sidewalks and the walkability. So, you know, when that car does finally move and there's a ton of snow, you know, it does become a bit of a pedestrian hazard, I think.
And you're right, the goal isn't to want to ticket people or have somebody towed, but the, the reality is, if it happens to you once, you probably won't.
Right, right, and, you know, pedestrian safety is, is important uptown, and, you know, it does kind of get in the way.
But I think the problem is, is folk, folks, you know, if folks don't have parking, where do they put their car on a snow ban? That's, I think that's what you're running into, is that it might not be, you know, sort of laziness or not wanting to move, they might actually not have, know where to put their car. So this, this is what we're sort of thinking is, maybe we think about it, and I just threw out Town Hall Parking Lot, we discussed that briefly, and again, they'd have to get out in time, there'd have to be a time limit so that it would give the, the DPW time to plow it, um, but we don't have any decisions yet, it's just sort of throwing it out as, let's explore this and, and let's come up with a plan, you know, if, would Schneider allow them to park over on the Schneider Lot, and then, you know, with the understanding that they get out by a certain hour and then we could clear it completely? We don't yet have the answers, but we're sort of raising the, as, as a phase one look, you know, we'd look at the takeout parking policy, we look at the, the sort of what we're going to do for overnight parking and snow emergency parking, and like, where and when, and then also, you know, working aggressively with the venues to kind of make sure that when they're attracting people to town, that they're telling them where to park, so that we're not ending up frustrated. Um, so that's kind of where we are on this.
Yeah, Dennis had something to.
I knew it first, please.
You know, Paige, one of the things I've seen in other communities is a partnership with the local churches, because, you know, certain times of the week, those lots are completely vacant, you know, you have funerals, you have to work around that, but certainly during the week, there's a lot of overflow parking availability with the churches, so I've seen that done, actually, and there can even be a, a stipend worked out with the church that would be welcome in terms of freeing up the spaces.
That's a great idea. So these are the type of things, we, we're not saying we have the answers, and this is, this is the kind of input we're looking for as we move forward. Because we are looking, just so you know, a teaser here for my next slide is, we are opening up a one-month comment period. So that's why this is sort of an effort to get folks talking about it, particularly stakeholders, and, and Dennis, that's a great idea. So these are the ideas we want to hear, and we could start formulating a plan, um, that we would bring back.
A couple of comments, Paige. One, um, two-potter, what about that, um, house that we're going to tear down that, um, Mr. King's going to tear down and make a little bit of a parking lot? I don't see that on your map. Is that just because it hasn't been done yet?
Correct, um, look it, there you go, but it's coming up. But no, um, it will not be ready, this, you know, it's not in our phase one, only because, right, so what's going to happen out at Shovel Town is, you know, they're, they're working fast and furiously on the, the Shovel Town and also the four apartments above. Then they're getting ready to, I believe, in the fall, they've been delayed, um, to remove Keating's Funeral Home, and at the same time, they're going to demolish that house at 15 to 17 Market Street. At that point, because they're going to lose the funeral home area where they've kind of been having some staging and whatnot, they're going to move some of their equipment over to 15 to 17 Market. Um, so they have any, you know, they have the rights to use that until they're done with construction, and then, then they're going to construct our 14-space parking lot there. So it's probably another year or so before that's ready to go. But that is coming, yes, you are right.
And, and as an offshoot to that, that would be an ideal location for off-street parking during a winter ban. It's not an important lot, yet it could be one where, you know.
Easily accessible for all.
Exactly, just as a thought to, uh, down the road, like you said, now, a year from now.
And, and Paige, you know, I would really like us to, maybe it's walking around and talking to a lot of the businesses, but with the number of businesses we have that could be takeout parking, it could really eat up a lot of it, and I think there's a lot of education, like, being from town, I don't know, I never go to Subway or Sam's and park out front. Like, there's always parking out back, you know, so maybe these businesses, as they have takeout orders, reminding people there's parking out back, you know, really, besides, on this list that we see here, Foxborough Nutrition and Primos, there is private or, or town parking either attached to or beside it. Like, for Lovely Pizza, for example, I know there was a big thing with the 15-minute spots there, but there's all the spots next to Sober Camel. Um, you know, the property owner owns those spots, too, so, you know, instead of it becoming an automatic 15-minute parking spot out front, what are they doing on the property with, with the landlord? You know, where their business is, or with the parking out back. Um, we also had some talk about some of the alleyways, so the alley between the Commons and FCA's, I'm looking out at the alley, sorry, that's why I'm looking out the window, um, is definitely the widest one, but there are some other alleys that can use some cleanup, that can, that can, I think, be a little bit more comfortable for pedestrian passage, um, between some of the other ones. So we talked about maybe cleaning up some of those alleys, and what can we do, you know, to make people, whether it's lighting or just passability, be more comfortable, especially, you know, as we get further down Central Street, being able to pass through to that Central Street Lot there.
And, uh, just another, uh, thought, Paige, if those of us that have been on the board a little bit longer remember the, uh, I think the first time we talked about parking issues was when, um, uh, Union Straw, uh, opened up, you know, it brought up, uh, uh, Foxborough House of Pizza and Primos and things like that. But Paige, at one point, you talked about, if I remember correctly, a parking app, um, where if someone's coming into a town and, and, uh, and, uh, 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 I'm not an app necessarily person, but is, is that a real possibility now that we're a couple of years down the road? Are there, is there apps out there, and can we get Foxborough as part of that?
I don't know if there are general apps. I think we'd have to maybe, I think the vision we had was more of a, you know, an uptown app where you could get information and, including parking there, um, but that's a good suggestion, too, Doc, to, like, I can look into whether there's just a general app that rather than creating from scratch, that we're actually joining in on something. So I can check on that to see if there is something like that. Because I've learned from trying to, you know, maintain the EDC site, that this is not my area of expertise. So app building and that sort of thing, I don't even know what to do, but I'm sure there are a lot of great minds out there who have solved that problem. So I will definitely look into that. That's a good idea.
And I know, Paige, you had an intern last year, I don't know if you do again, or I heard there might be a shared one, but, you know, I know there was a lot of, like, car counting and looking and just going out and manually, you know, maybe helping the police, just, you know, walking around and kind of visually seeing what we've got and taking counts, you know, at various times during the day as well.
Sure.
Can I ask one other question?
So, um.
Oh, Paige, can I ask one more question? I'm sorry, but not to you, to Lieutenant Fitzgerald, why can't you chuck cars anymore? Uh, the, is that unconstitutional? No way. It was case law. It, it was particular to a drunk driving case, but the case law applies, so the person, it, it, we could, you can do anything, but is it lawful? No. Is it going to be overturned when the person comes in to say, I didn't park there for hours, I, I want to appeal? Can't use the, well, the police chalked your tires, well, they, if they knew, they could cite the case law in, in theory, in, in a actual court. Now, parking appeal isn't a courtroom, but it's, it's just not legal for us to do, so it, it's telling our people to do something that the courts have said is kind of out of bounds, we, we, it's just not right. So, um, it, but there are, there are places that parking, meter maids, for a better term, they can still do it. They're not law enforcement. They're, they're enforcing a parking regulation, like ordinance, like Boston, traffic in Boston, the parking, they're not police officers, they're, they're a separate division. Where we're in Natick, the parking attendants, they fell under the, they were separate people, they would go do it. So, and we had talked about this in, in the, um, in the group. I said, okay, we're going to have to expand government here, because we're going to need the parking attendant, we're going to need the person to collect the money, the person, we're going to need four full-time positions, and, which is, that's where it goes 15 years down the road. That, that's the 15, 20-year outlook, is when you, you, you stuff, you know, thousands of people, and it, it eventually will happen. I don't think it'll happen anytime soon, but that's, that's where it heads to control parking, unless if, you know, we can get ahead of it now, which I think we're, um.
And then you'll, then you'll know, further down the road, you'll know what the problems are, how, you know, how many people are parking, how many people complain they can't find somewhere. And, you know, Paige, I mean, I'm sure, when you say advertising, it, you know, um, we want to be business-friendly and, and help the takeout places or any of the restaurants and establishments, but, yeah, I mean, just, they can just help themselves by the advertising, put it on your, on your website.
Right, parking out back. Make a sign, you know?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Because a lot of these establishments, you know, I think we have a lot of parking, and we have a lot, it's, a lot of it's really education, you know, and getting, hopefully, the business owners, like, I know, the package store has a sign that says, it's out back, and it's, it's, it's big and it's marked, and, you know, what can we, what can we do there?
Plus, and you know something, too, obviously, we're not, we're not downtown Boston, but when you say, people do get lazy, they want to find a parking space that's close. When you find one that's close, you're like, oh my God, look at this, I found the spot. But the re- reality is, if you were to go to most places in town, go to a theater, you're not going to park near where you're going, you're going to have to park somewhere, and, and the, the options that we have are short walks. So, you know, get out there, be a little healthy, do a couple steps.
Dennis and Seth have had your hands up, will you?
So no pressing, no guy again.
Yeah, new guy, new guy again, card.
Paige, you know, the, the Patriots have a huge parking problem, and they use a number of these apps that you're talking about, so I don't know if they could be a resource, or they could be somebody we could piggyback on in terms of what they're doing, but, but they are a source of, of multiple apps that really manage parking, you know, right up the street.
That's a great idea. Sure, Dennis, that's great.
Sorry, we're all having a mint.
I was wondering what Doc was doing, I'm like.
I was very quietly trying to open the. But I felt Doc come up over my shoulder.
That mint looked great.
Go ahead, Seth.
So I was thinking about the Schneider parking lot off of Railroad Ave. I know the town does not own that lot. But anecdotally speaking, people don't want to park there. Um, it's sketchy-looking, um, it's overgrown, there's, it just doesn't look like a, a town municipal parking lot. So people don't necessarily want to use it, even though, maybe they don't want to walk, but it's, there's that, and then across the way from that, off of Napontet Avenue, is a gated, um, off parking lot that hasn't probably had a car in it in 15 years and more. My kids learned to ride their bike there, but it's just sort of like, it's over, it's, the nature's taken over. Um, so that's available space, again, that must be owned by Schneider, right? But it's been vacant for years and years and years.
Could we talk to Schneider about, you know, if they're open to us, you know, creating more than just a wayfinding sign, like a real, you know, sign that you would, like you said, when you pull in, that you'd feel comfortable, especially, you can see the wayfinding signs if you come from Railroad, but sometimes going straight from Bird, like, to have that, that sign right there, if you're coming from the theater, if you're coming from the restaurant, you know, that visibility that would show that it's kind of more an official lot may be helpful.
Yeah, we actually, um, we have received some great feedback, um, from one of the residents that, asking for that, to have a sign, so if you're coming straight from Bird, that definitely makes it clear that, you know, you see the sign, because it's sideways when you're coming from Bird. And also, I didn't realize, um, that we, when we made the wayfinding signs, there was an arrow going the wrong way. So that's why there isn't one over not by O'Reilly's. You know, we should have a sign on the, on the Common, on the, on the roundabout, the rotary there, that points down Bird Street that way, and the sign has the wrong arrow, so that's not, so we are having that one, uh, redone, and we are going to add one to Bird Street. So I also understand we could have something nicer-looking and make it look more welcoming, but at a minimum, we do want to get the P sign up there, straight on, and then an arrow up at the Common, so that folks know when they're going around that they can go that way. So those are two things on our list right now. Um, Lee, I think when we talked previously a couple months ago, you know, the other issue is, if we're going to ask folks to park at, say, for example, the Schneider Lot, we need to make sure that, you know, the, there's enough lighting and that it's a safe passage and that it's clear, you know, we, we did talk about the Town Hall Lot, but that, you know, Market Street's a little rough. So we could, we talked about maybe having wayfinding direct them up to, you know, the, the Common, and then walk down, um, School Street instead. So these are all the kind of ideas we're thinking of, is how best to direct people, you know, would, you know, probably rather have folks walk up to the Common than go down Market, you know, they might be noisier and whatnot. We can't keep them from doing it, but we don't need to attract them to that area, uh, pretty residential area. So, um, these are all the considerations, you know, we'd like to sort of get comments, and we're going to start thinking through these things, and hopefully come forward with some suggestions, and we'll have more information about the app, we can talk to Schneider, and, um, you know, talk to some of the business and bring some more information forward with a, a bit of a plan. So let me get to phase, future phases. So one of the things we want to acknowledge is that when the theater has an event going on, one of their major events, there is going to be uptown congestion. on, one of their major events, there is going to be uptown congestion, I mean, I haven't been around for more than, you know, I've only been around about six years, but, you know, I would imagine for the decades, when there's a major theater event, Foxborough has always had congestion, it's just inevitable. So we can't, it's kind of like you don't build parking lots for the day after Thanksgiving at shopping malls, because otherwise, for the rest of the year, you'd be looking at a sea of parking. You know, obviously, the theater has zero parking, so that is our challenge. Adding Shovel Town is certainly gonna maybe, you know, it's gonna add to that, so we're gonna likely have some concerns around that. But we do want to sort of address the challenges as they arise, all the while being proactive. And then, the other point to bring up is, we need to be looking at the public parking lot that's gonna open, you know, in a year or so over at Market Street, and sort of what the policies are, you know, do we want to allow overnight, are we allowing overnight commercial vehicles? You know, we also have the land behind Judy's Florist, that actually, I don't know if you're, and actually, this is where the map came in, here's this map that shows, so, that little parcel B with an arrow there off Market Street, the town actually owns that property, and I don't know that anybody knew that, but it came up when we were selling, we did the survey, so, you know, we'll have to probably work with Judy's, or figure something out, because they've always used that, and, you know, they haven't been able to lately, but, so we might want to figure out what wants to be done there. You know, the other concern I have is that, if they can't park there, you know, would they put their vans and whatnot into that public parking, you know, we want to make sure that there's fairness and equity, and that, you know, as we move forward. So, that's something that I think, again, we don't need that yet, we're not quite there, there'll be another year or so, but those are things we should start thinking about. And then, as I mentioned, other wayfinding improvements, you know, improved signage, lighting, et cetera, we could think about those ideas of how to improve it when people are walking, driving, and whatnot, and so we are open to suggestions.
Paige, one more thing, I know you've heard me talk about this, and we've talked with Chris, and I've talked to the police about it, but also, is Rock Hill, now that it's two-way before the stop sign and one-way after, on a busy theater day, my daughter was volunteering up there, so I was up there for, like, every show, cars think that, that the whole street is one-way, so there was cars, it's a very narrow road, and cars were parked on both sides of that, so I, I know we were making, like, temporary signage, but I don't know that we've made permanent signage, to make sure the cars know that they can only park on one side of Rock Hill past the stop sign, do you know, did that signage ever go in?
I'm not sure, Lance, do you have anything on that? Because I know Rock Hill came up a little bit, and it seems like we're gonna be doing some striping and whatnot, but Lance, did you have, do you recall anything on that?
Yeah, I'm not sure the status of the signage off the top of my head, I can look into it, but I know that we're planning to stripe in the actual side of street parking, there are parallel parking spots on the one-way portion, so that'll, that'll be delineated and enforceable once that's in. You know, in terms of, yeah, we did talk about putting some kind of, you know, actually painting in, you know, something, you know, maybe, I don't know if it's gonna be double yellow, or what exactly, down the rest of Rock Hill, they indicated that it's two-way, though, to add to that as well, so, but I'll have to check on the status of the signage, I don't know off the top of my head.
Yeah, it's that two-way part, you know, if you're not from town, and you see cars parked up the left, you assume that before the stop sign, it's the same, and I literally saw the street impassable at some points from cars on both sides, so.
Wait, was that in the recent, or like, six months ago? Do you know?
That was, I'd have to go back and look, probably four months ago, or so. It was like, kind of right as the world started to, like, really open, like, February, so maybe only two, two or so.
Okay. So what we're suggesting here, you know, we learned through the Rotary conversation that, you know, we want to do things slowly, and make sure we get some feedback, so what we're doing is, we're opening up a comment period for anybody, particularly, you know, businesses in uptown, but also, you know, obviously, the residents are customers, so we're very open to hearing comments. We've gone ahead and created a Survey Monkey, it's not a survey, though, I just put in text boxes so that folks can enter in comments, questions, or concerns, you know, we want to hear from folks. There's a QR code on the screen, so if anyone at home, they could just scan that, and then we have the link here, and we can get this up on the web tomorrow, and I know Christina was saying she was gonna get this out, so, we want to get out there, so we're open to hearing input from, you know, anybody who has suggestions, concerns, or questions, then we would like to come back to the June 7th meeting, sort of bring up what we found, what we, what we learned, and start talking about policies and/or a policy, so that we can start ordering signs, and come up with something, so that when Shovel Town does open, we at least are ready for, for that first surge.
All right, so you'll be back June 7th. Sorry.
Sorry, I just wanted to say, I did get a text from Chris, I guess he's watching, saying that there are no parking signs up on Rock Hill.
Okay, great. Great. I haven't seen the issue in a while, so I must have fixed it.
That's great. You know, and the ironic thing is, as we talked about, is the most challenging times from what I, we can hear, is that, when it's like a Foxborough event, you know, because all the Foxborough folks know all the secret parking spots, and they kind of like, "Oh, we know", and they know there's no enforcement, so, you know, when you have outer towners come, they tend to want to follow the rules, you know, they're not gonna go park here, there, anyway, because they're very worried about getting tickets, they don't know, but it's ironic that it's, a lot of times, it's our residents and our, and our folks that are familiar with the town that kind of push the envelope a little bit, so we just need to, you know, start working on the policies and education, to Leah's point, is just letting folks know, you know, where they can go, because they probably feel like they have no options, and we want to, we want to get rid of that misperception, that there is no parking uptown. Tell folks to wear their sneakers.
And maybe a drop-off zone, just as we're talking, too, for the Orpheum, like, so someone did bring up to me handicap parking, that, you know, there's obviously the spot to the gas station, but then the next closest one is in front of Memorial Hall, so when I was at a show, someone with a handicap placard actually came up to me and let me know how challenging and how far the distance was, and if it was compliant within so many feet of theater with how many spots there were, so.
One other thought that you should consider is the, I don't know if you mentioned it earlier, Paige, was the, was an Uber drop-off as well, you know, for, you know, any kind of, you know, services that are gonna be available to people to drop people off in the center of town.
Yeah, and that's one reason we are a little hesitant about these 50, or five-minute drop-off takeouts, because, you know, with DoorDash and whatnot, we don't necessarily want to encourage DoorDashers to be pulling up and taking those spots and pulling in, so we, you know, we also need to think about those type of services, you know, where, where those folks get directed to pick up from restaurants, so they're not taking up prime real estate. I'm not sure, my son was a DoorDash driver, I'm not sure they listen, listen, but we can certainly try, so, so that's kind of where we are, you know, I don't know if there's any questions or comments, but I would ask that folks, you know, give us their ideas or concerns, so that we make sure we are addressing what's out there, and, you know, know that we are paying attention, we are aware, and we, you know, we're going to be trying to be prepared as Wall Street comes online, you know, to have some suggestions and to have some information for, you know, overflow parking, snow parking, that type of thing. So I don't think we could just pretend, you know, to not have overnight parking when you have a snow ban, I mean, you have to sort of figure out how to help these people, if there are going to be people on the street, I know we had trouble with Byrd, and it just seems like it's going to, there will be some overflow parking at times that we should address.
All right, so we'll hear more on June 7th, after your comment period.
Yes.
All right, great.
Thank you, Paige.
Thanks, Paige, thanks, Lance.
All right, thank you, everybody. Thanks, good night.
Good night, everyone.
All right, so next we have Assistant Town Manager's update, then we'll go into Town Manager's update and Selectman's update.
So first, I just wanted to touch on, a quick update on the Town Manager's evaluation process, so you, as, as board members that have served over the last year, should have already received your, your packet online from the Assess Team, you know, valuation software that we have, that we are now using. So Bill has already done his self-evaluation process, that has been sent, if you haven't received that, please let me know, I'm guessing that you probably have, and you're probably getting those daily reminders.
Yeah, I brought this up because the, like, just before this meeting, I got it saying, again, it's due May 11th, like, it's due May 11th, it's due May 21st, so like, I was confused, and we looked at the timeline, and, you know, just to remind you, I won't be here on June 21st, so if you want to mark that one for sure right now.
Oh, yeah.
Uber girl. Yep, so...
Here are the dates that you want to actually pay attention to, until we, you know, this, Bill's evaluation is actually the pilot program for this software, following this, and several weeks later, we'll be sending them to our 170 employees, to make sure they all get, so this is, so we're still working out a few bugs.
Can I give you another bug before I forget, too?
Of course.
There is an option to do it anonymously, which I don't think that that's anyone's intent, so if you can shut that functionality off, especially when you roll out to the 170, you probably want to shut that functionality off.
Thank you. Yeah, that's more really for the 360 evaluation, which we do have that functionality in the, in the, with the software, but I'll see if we can shut that.
Yeah, like, I could have done it for Bill's eval, and I don't think that that's our intent there, so.
No, we want the supervisors to be identified, in this case, the four board members that have served over the last year. So, the, what we're asking first, now that you've received those, is to go through it and schedule a meeting, Katie from our office will be reaching out to each of you, to try to coordinate and set up a meeting with individual board members with, with the Town Manager, and we'd like to have those all scheduled and done by May 26th, so that you have your individual sit-down meeting with Bill, that you can present your, you know, your discussion back and forth with him, and then, and then, the following week, on May 31st, which is right after Memorial Day, go ahead and present your final evaluation through the portal to Assess Team of Bill's evaluation, and then between, between that time, yes, Dennis, you have a question?
Just to, you know, clear it up immediately, I would be excluded from that.
That's correct. So you'll be doing next year's evaluation.
Right.
And would have still participated had he not resigned?
Yes.
So it's just, it's a little bit different since he had resigned.
Actually, he won't be doing my lay-wish next year, either, so. I won't be, I won't be, I won't be here to receive it, so, so, sorry about that.
But I did include Dennis on the, on the emails, and will continue to, because I want you to see the process and how this rolls out. And then, between May 31st, when you submit your individual evaluations, and, and your next meeting, which will be on, on June 7th, Leah will go ahead and compile those for a summary evaluation, and I'll provide any support needed in that process, and then on your June 7th meeting, Leah will present that summary evaluation to the, to the board and to the, to the public here at your televised meeting. And then, all of those individual evaluations, as well as your summary evaluation, will be, will be put into Bill's, you know, personnel file. I've attached to Board Docs, along with, with these dates, the, the performance evaluation and review policy that we presented to the board last September, and you approved and adopted, that is also, also resides on the Human Resources page, along with our HR policies. Just to give some guidance, we provide that to our supervisors and managers as well, and just an overview of how to do an evaluation, things to keep in mind, you know, what, what goals should like, look like, because we'll be coming up in, in, after, following your July, excuse me, June 7th meeting, maybe sometime later in June or in July, setting evaluations for the future year, and then some evaluation tips. So that's all I have on that, unless there are any questions on evaluation, either dates or process. And then, the last thing I wanted to update you on was that there is a Senate Bill Number 104 that will be coming up on hearings, and it's, it's a bill sponsored by Senator Feeney, who represents us, and it is, it is a follow-on, during the last legislative session, the, our Committee on Child Sexual Abuse and Awareness had, you know, worked with the Senator on sponsoring this bill, and what it does is, it expands the, the number of people that would, or the types of people that would be mandated reporters, such as volunteers, coaches, scout leaders, people who work in schools, and employees. And, so, you know, we've been involved in following this bill, last time it went to the House, we did go up, and a number of us, from the, from the Police Department, from the schools, from administration, from clergy, including Reverend Bill Dudley, went up and testified on the Hill on behalf of this bill, we think it's very important. Foxborough does lead the way in the, in the state, as far as providing training and requiring our employees to participate in, we've done a very good job, and we'd like to see this wider spread throughout the Commonwealth, it's just another way that we'd like to, to lead the way and, and spread the good things that we're doing. You know, to this point, Bill went and penned an email, and, and sent it to our entire legislative delegation, you know, asking for them to also support this bill, we're hoping that it makes it further, and gets approved this time through. So that's all I have for an update this week, unless you have any questions for me.
Mike, did you send Bill's evaluation through Board Docs, or to our Town email? I don't...
It went to your Town email.
Yeah, we're getting like, a million reminders about it.
I see all the reminders, but I don't, I did want to make sure I didn't miss it, I just went back down, but I haven't gotten the, his evaluation, so could you resend to me?
Sure.
Or when we log in, do we see it?
When you log in...
Yeah, I think we'll log in and see it.
Yeah, if you log into Assess Team, we can do that, and we can go ahead and send a reminder if you need any instructions or help with getting in there, or if you didn't receive it, let's follow up after this meeting, and I'll make sure that you get it.
You know how technically challenged I am, so, no, I'll reach, I'll reach out to you, I'll touch base with you and figure it out.
Please do.
Yeah, I, then I was thinking, no, maybe it was sent to the Board Docs, not the email, but so I'm...
No, it went to your Town email.
Okay, I'll, I'll touch base with you. I'll touch base with you.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Dennis?
Is there a list of the mandated reporters that we could review?
The ones that...
I'd like to make sure the healthcare area is covered, for instance, or...
Sure, so it's referenced in, so I attached the bill in your, in Board Docs, and if it doesn't already list the current mandated reporters, then I'll send that out to you. This bill lists the number of people that it's trying to expand it to, actually, the list is included in Mass. General Law, Chapter 119, Section 21, and I can send that out to you, so that it shows, you know, which people are already currently mandated reporters.
Great, thank you, okay. All right, any other questions for me?
Phil?
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair, so, just a couple things to report, the, yesterday was, I stood by waiting to testify for the, before the State Legislature on the legislation, the forward legislation that was filed by Governor Baker and Lieutenant Governor, just about a week ago, there was a testimony held at the, at the State House yesterday, but I was gonna do it virtually, and then, unbeknownst to me, that Sue Perez, who was actually a member of the Housing Authority, actually testified in person after the meeting, I couldn't be there, obviously, because of town meeting yesterday, but she actually testified, did a really good job, and so I actually dropped off at that point, and I did touch base with Greg Spear as well, to let him know that, but they will follow up with a letter to the Legislature, supporting legislation that would allow a grant for about $4.6 million that's included in the forward legislation for Walnut Street, so for, for the Housing Authority project that's planned for about 200 units of senior housing. So that, that $4.6 million would be used to extend sewer, as well as provide traffic improvements at the intersection near 140 and 95, so, a very important piece of legislation for us, obviously. Of course, town meeting was last night, and I think, generally speaking, the meeting went well, we, it was great to see that the budget went through, with really, with virtually no questions, which was, I think, really interesting to see that, so I appreciate the support that came out of that. I know that there was some level of disappointment for articles, the last two articles, but also understand and respect the opinion of town meeting, and that's why we did those articles, to see how the community felt, and ultimately, if they did feel the way they did, then they had the opportunity to present that, that opinion, so we'll stand, stand by and, and respect that decision as it is. The, I had a couple outdoor dining approvals, one with the VFW and Foxborough Country Club, so I just want to report that back to the board. Also, the Senate Ways and Means reported out this afternoon on their recommendation for the fiscal '23 budget, we're gonna be evaluating those numbers tomorrow morning, they came out late this afternoon, before, just before the meeting, so haven't had a chance to really digest what's, what's in those numbers, but they do look good, in terms of our, our state aid numbers look actually better in that version, just so everybody's aware of how that works, the governor files his bill, which, which contains the recommended budget numbers for the state, it then goes to House Ways and Means, then to the full House, then it goes back, then it goes to the Senate Ways and Means, then to the Senate, full Senate, and then, and then there's a conference committee held after that, to try and figure out the difference between the two bills, those get combined, and then resubmitted to the governor, the governor has the opportunity to review those numbers, and... The governor has the opportunity to review those numbers and either, uh, either accept or veto certain, certain aspects of them. If there are any vetoes that the, the state legislation disagrees with, they have still the ability to overturn those decisions as well. So it's still, uh, we're about three-quarters way through that process at this point, so, you know, we're still standing by, hoping that the numbers come out in our favor this year, which I'm, I'm hopeful based on the number, uh, the amount of money that's being collected at the state and taxes right now, which is way up. Uh, I also sent a letter to the chairman, uh, in addition to the letter I sent on, on the House, on Senate 104, I sent a letter to the chairman of the Public Service Committee this week, uh, on legislation, um, to follow up on our legislation to, uh, take Foxborough out of civil service for the Police Department. That has stalled in the, uh, in the, in the, that bill has stalled, stalled in the Public Service Committee primarily because they are, they were in the process of reevaluating the Civil Service Act itself and trying to do some reforms to it. And the, the chairman of that committee was involved in those discussions, so he held off and pushing any, any, uh, local legislation that was looking to get out of civil service before, uh, those discussions had been held. Uh, at this point in time, those discussions have concluded, so now we're at the point now where we want to try and move that legislation forward. And so I sent a letter, uh, reasserting our position that we'd like to be removed and the community here has spoken on that very issue. And then, uh, capital plans, we'll be updating, we'll be looking to meet with the department heads tomorrow morning to go over capital plans that were approved last night, as well as any opera plans that we've, we've had approved and are up for, for getting, that were discussed during the capital meetings this year. So we want to try and get, uh, moving on those. Some of those things are on moving forward at this point in time, but I'll have a full update on where we stand on those projects, uh, following our discussions tomorrow. And last but not least, um, wanted to say, uh, congratulations and, um, and want to wish a very happy retirement to Ed Hurley, who was the president of the, of the, of the Hockamock YMCA. Uh, spent 28 years, uh, at the, at the helm, did a terrific job and, uh, all of us in, in Foxborough and the surrounding communities have benefited by his leadership and, and fine work in leading that organization. And, um, and the show supported at the party was pretty extensive, it was over 400 people that attended the, that party, which was, uh, really, uh, really nice to see and very glad to see Ed, uh, be recognized for the work that he's done for this, for this community and, and for the Y itself. That's all I have, but I'm sure.
All right, great. So going into Selectmen's update, I had Christina just print off a draft schedule for next year. Um, we're not going to vote on it tonight, but I just wanted to get something on paper to have everyone think about. So our schedule does go from July to June. So right now, we're, we have three more meetings left on our schedule, May 24th, June 7th and June 21st. And then the meetings that you see here would vote on next, next time. We're proposing one meeting in July and August. Obviously, if we need to meet more often, we'll absolutely have another meeting. And then January just ends up with three meetings and one is right after the New Year's holiday. It was just, you know, if, if we want to have all three or one to go, just something for you guys to think about and look at your calendars. Um, it just continued with the, every other week, didn't move anything around, just, just kind of kept going. So, um, if there's any early thoughts, certainly let me know, but I think this would be the proposed, if you go home and look at calendars and see if you have any questions. And now with the license for the stadium, it becomes a little bit easier where it's just the data sheets versus, you know, the public hearings and, and how we used to have to do it, so. Want to get that out there early so everyone would have it. The next thing is the Memorial Day Parade, just wanted to have a save the day out there. It's exciting that that will be coming back with an actual parade, May, um, 30th. They will be in front of us next meeting to actually approve the road closure, but I did get an email from Mark, Craig and Ally, um, just with some of what they were planning and the proposed route. So I, I had Christina add this here as well as the invitation to Memorial Day. Um, and I think we'll just have to talk, I know that's my daughter's birthday weekend, so it's, you know, sometimes I'm not around, so if anyone else, um, you know, wants to give some remarks at that, if they're around, let me know. Otherwise, I can certainly, you know, make sure to travel back because it is a really important event. And then annual town elections bill already hit town meeting, but just, you know, thank you to everyone who ran, congratulations to everyone that was elected, you know, new and incumbents, and then thank you to those who have served for many years, like Eric Arvidon, who I don't even know how many years he was on, on the Board of Health.
Yeah, 25 plus.
I was going to say, I think it's decades, not years, so, you know, some, some real, um, long tenure to the town. So just wanted to make sure we said thank you to him as well.
If I could just add, uh, just, so I want to take the opportunity to thank Ed O'Leary, who served on the board as well. Um, so I want to wish him, all the best wishes to him and his family, and thank you for his service to the community. And certainly again, want to, want to welcome Dennis to, to the board as well.
Thank you. Quick comment?
Yeah, of course.
Uh, shout out to DPW, they did a phenomenal job up at the Rotary. Anybody that's walked through there, um, they, it, it's gorgeous. They did a great job cleaning it, clearing it, leveling it. It took them a day and a half and, uh, it really came out nice.
And it will be hydro-seated Wednesday, and in case anyone's panicking like me, it does not matter for the J.C.'s Craft Fair. So we are all good there. So that will be laid down tomorrow.
And I, and then we'll see, that was actually donated, which is even better.
Yes, and then we'll, we have that coming up as well.
For anyone who may, may be wondering why the flags are half-staffed here at, uh, Town Hall, it's because, um, you know, Josephine Miller has passed away, uh, yesterday. A World War II Marine, uh, she would have been 99 this August. Um, she served, uh, her country and this community with distinction for many, many decades and, uh, we, you know, we want to reach out to her, her family, friends, loved ones, uh, who are all mourning, uh, and they're getting ready to come into town soon and we'll, of course, put out word when we hear when the services are going to be.
Keep us posted. Condolences to the family. All right, anything else before we head into, we've got quite a few action items this evening.
I want to send Seth out with the bang.
All right.
Right. Motion to approve the renewal of two pool table licenses for Rally Point Pub and Inn.